The July sixteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Looks like we have one commissioner missing, so we'll acknowledge that. We have a quorum. Commissioner Passiak, will you please, Vice Chair Passiak, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Record.
All right, thank you. If you'll please silence your personal communication devices, which in plain English means turn off your cell phones. Or silence them, or put them in the garbage can where we can't hear them ringing. Okay, so we're gonna go to item C, which is the consent calendar, which consists of the approval of minutes from May seventh regular meeting, May seventh study session, June fourth study session, which will go down in history. And that's it. So do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion's carried unanimously. Okay, so we're gonna go to item D one, which is CUP twenty twenty four dash zero two. This is a request by Lynn Niewadamski on behalf of Circle K for conditional use permit to allow for a soil remediation system and related equipment to be installed. The property is located at nineteen ten North State Route eighty nine, Chino Valley, Arizona. Has anybody on the commission spoken anybody on this item? Thank you. Will?
Alrighty. Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, Planning Commission. Will Denji, your Assistant Director for Development Services. As read before you tonight is a conditional use permit for the Circle K at the north end of Chino for the remediation equipment that is above ground. So tonight's item is only for that of the equipment that is above ground. It has nothing to do with the below ground stuff. The town of Chino Valley has no jurisdiction over the below ground. Everything is handled through the county, state, or at the federal level for these. The applicant and her team is in attendance this evening, so if you have any specific questions for the equipment or what's going on there, specific to that operation, they can answer your questions. So just in case you, if you don't know where our Circle K is here, it's located at the north end of Chino Valley in between Palomino Road and West Butterfield. The subject site itself is only a portion of the whole parcel. The parcel actually makes out this little S shape outlined in blue, so it includes the Circle K along with the Butterfield Village Plaza, which has the barbershop, shipping, print and ship, and the barbecue place. So again, if you haven't paid a quick stop to Circle K in the recent months, onsite currently is the remediation equipment. The town of Chino Valley did go ahead and give a at-risk approval for the folks, or the remediation to begin. We did not want to hold that up for the CUP process because we do understand the critical nature of this incident. And so they're on, they're onsite, they're currently operational, and this is to really solidify that and to make sure that it is as minimal of impact visually and audibly for the surrounding neighbors. So these images here are looking west if you're standing at State Route eighty nine. The remediation site or where the equipment is, is located to the northwest of the Circle K itself, enclosed within that temporary screening fence and then the Jersey barriers as well. This is another picture on Circle K's property facing southwest, a little bit closer up to the site itself. This is from Palomino looking south. And then from behind Circle K looking east. The driveway there in the picture where the gray Tacoma is parked is the driveway for access to the site. They do not access through Circle K's parking lot. Now, I'm not gonna pretend to know what, how they actually do this, so I'll leave that to the specialists there, but I will give you a inventory of what is currently onsite. They do currently have two catalytic oxidizers, one thousand gallon diesel tank above ground, two thirty-six kilowatt generators, one thousand gallon propane tank, and then two fifty-five gallon knockout condensate drums for the oxidizers. The equipment itself is pictured on the screen before you. To the left is the oxidizers. On the bottom right is one of the generators. Above that is the fuel, and then additional pictures of the screening onsite currently. One of the big concerns for this is the noise that this generates, and it is relatively low. The impact is really essentially gone without, within three hundred feet distance radius around the site itself or the equipment itself. So once you hit to those apartments, the mannequin apartments to the west there, you're really not getting any impact from the noise. It really dies off right about this three hundred fifty, three hundred seventy-five foot radius, or that distance. There was a neighborhood meeting held on June thirteenth of this year. We noticed all properties within a thousand foot radius of the subject site. Fifteen neighbors attended. While there was no concerns expressed over the equipment itself, most of the concerns that was brought up by the public were in relation to the underground component of this, which again, the town does not have any jurisdiction over unfortunately. So because this is a conditional use permit, we get to set conditions with it to ensure that there is no ill effect due to this equipment. So staff is recommending that there is an installed seven-foot-tall CMU wall enclosure to replace that temporary fencing. We are recommending landscaping be planted along there to help soften the appearance. Once the equipment is removed, we are asking that they re-stripe the parking lot to ensure that the pre and post-operation of Circle K still meets the minimum parking requirements. We're also stipulating that compliance with due process is adhered to, ensuring that anything for the local state or, excuse me, local county or state regulations for the remediation is met. Maintenance, surveillance, and accountability. We're ensuring that there's a qualified technician readily available to address any concerns with the equipment. That way, if something goes south and we're not hearing alarms for four or five days, that they're able to get up here and get that fixed in a timely manner. And then ultimately expiration, the removal of the remediation system within three years, and the ability to apply for an extension. Within the neighborhood meeting, the applicants did hope, they did state that they are hopefully, this will be removed within two years and this will be contained. But I do know that these go longer. The Sergio one onsite currently has been in operation for about four years, and I know in other areas, they do go a lot longer, so we want to make sure they have that ability to extend this. So with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission forward to Town Council a recommendation of approval for the conditional use permit with the conditions of approval in Attachment A. I will go ahead and open it up for questions or discussion.
Anybody have questions for Will while he's up there?
I do.
Will, on the thousand gallon diesel tank, does it have secondary containment?
No, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm sure. Yes, it does.
And some of these things, we can, when the applicant comes up, we can get more technical with it.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have questions?
I just have one question. You said, local county and state requirements for remediation. What about the EPA, federal?
So that they are facilitated through ADEQ, which is designated to county if?
I thought that might be the case. Thank you.
So just one question. So the town doesn't have any authority about what happens below the dirt underneath Circle K? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is, I believe, to be an accurate statement, Frank.
Doesn't sound like it's on. Okay. So the, the town, according to this paperwork, says that, that we do not have any authority below the ground for any of the cleanup or regulations or fines or fees or whatever.
Right, and I would maybe clarify that a little bit to also say that the town doesn't have any, the town code does not address anything underground, so we don't have any local rules or laws pertaining to that, so we would defer to the state laws and regulations primarily with ADEQ for this matter.
Is that a pretty normal process?
Yes, sir. That's pretty, pretty common. I'm not an attorney, so I, but I'm not saying we could make some rules, but we don't have any in place.
But in your, in your experience?
In my experience, it differs to-
This stuff is usually handled in this way by most municipalities.
Right, going back to the nineties when I was pulling up storage tanks, it was state and federal regulations that governed it.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Probably have you come up later. Okay, the applicant is here. Would you please step up and educate everybody? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Lynn Niewadamski. I'm the President of NCOR Consulting, and we've been hired by Circle K Stores to conduct the investigation and remediation for the release. Good evening to Chairman Merritt, Vice Chair Passiak, and all Commissioner members. What questions can I answer?
Okay, I know, Robert, you have a lot of experience in this business, so have at it.
Yeah, it looks like it was pretty well addressed. My only question is, has the EPA inspected the site or made any? Has the EPA got involved at all in this?
The EPA is not involved at the federal level because they've given authority to the ADEQ. ADEQ has been to the site when we were initially investigating, and they were looking more at the equipment. We've had several routine meetings with them, and that will continue. We also provide periodic, bi-weekly progress reports to our case manager. So this is high on their radar. We're in discussions with them ongoing all the time.
Can we go back to the slide that has the equipment? Please? Would you mind just giving us a layman's education on what we're looking at there?
Absolutely. So for this release, we have two pieces of equipment onsite, at least initially because of the urgency around this matter. Usually, we only have one. These are trailer-mounted systems that consist of, it's kind of hard for me to point it out in these pictures, but if you look at the systems, they have a control panel that has logic that controls temperatures and has alarms for safety features. There's a blower on each of these trailer-mounted units, and that operates in reverse to pull a vacuum. And then there's a burner chamber, and that's where the destruction of the hydrocarbons happens with the vapors that we're pulling out of the ground. And then we have a stack, and that's where clean air or treated air comes out of the system after we've put it through the burner.
So basically, just if I'm understanding it, you're, you're drawing gas vapors or other carb, hydrocarbon products out and burning them and cleaning the air that gets discharged into the atmosphere.
That, that's exactly correct. Yes.
The burner's propane-fired?
They are, but we can switch that to natural gas, and we hope to do that in the future because there's a natural gas line close by.
So that has to go through the gas company to provide access for you guys?
That's correct, and your building department.
Okay.
And I do remember the meeting when you, when Circle K met with council, and they said that the efficiency rate is pretty high as far as burning the hydrocarbons, but what about the the burn off from the fuel, from the, the fuel from the burning process?
Yes, that is included in our modeling of emissions, so the VOCs from burning of the propane is included in meeting that efficiency for gasoline organic destruction. And the permit that we operate under allows for propane or natural gas. It's a more conservative general permit.
Sure, natural gas is cheaper.
It'll be easier.
Yeah.
And less equipment above ground.
Yeah.
So the generators, they don't factor into that because they're just a generator like any other job site?
That's correct. They fall within a certain class of generators that don't need their own individual permit. They're diesel-fueled.
Anybody else have any questions? Pull your microphone down there so they can hear.
Do you think you'll exceed the three years?
Honestly, yes. We, we've said that we would, we know we need to go a minimum of two years. I think we will likely exceed the three years. As we all know, the release was a large volume, and it's gonna take some time. Just to be perfectly frank.
And I know this isn't part of the meeting, but is there any real latest update as far as any migration?
We do have, we've been sampling the, what we call the regional aquifer that most of the water supply wells are drilled into bi-weekly since May first. And so far, we do not have any indication of release to that aquifer. We've done extensive soil investigation, and, you know, once we had that done and the wells installed, we started focusing on the remediation, but we are monitoring very closely.
And is there a contingency plan if it does reach out?
Yes. The, the purpose of those deep wells are to act as, if you will, canary wells or indicator wells. They're purposely placed between the source at the store and the nearest drinking water wells in, in the down gradient direction and cross gradient direction. So if we do have any indication of a release in those indicator wells, we will reassess what needs to happen next. There's, there's enough time before it would get to any other well, and we do have a backup plan that I hope we never have to use where we have looked at, you know, what we would have to do. We, we looked at this early on if the aquifer was contaminated and we had to treat the water supply. So we made calls. We've gotten quotes and timelines on what that would take, but we do not anticipate that based on what we're seeing now.
So the, when you say drinking water wells, is that for the town or for all of the wells, that private wells as well?
We've looked at all of those wells, the town network wells, the different community water suppliers, as well as individual wells. The wells that are closest to the site are mostly individual wells with the exception of the mannequin apartments. That's a small water supplier.
Which direction does the water flow underground?
Regionally, it flows north-northwest based on our, based not only on our research, does it flow north towards Del Rio Springs, but based on our wells and data, we have calculated gradient to be to the north-northwest. But we are constantly looking at and trying to get a little more information on the larger well networks that pump so that we can understand if there's gonna be any influence where we'll have gradient shifts or groundwater flow shifts, for lack of a better term.
I have a quick question. Do the generators run twenty-four-seven?
As long as the equipment is running twenty-four-seven, which is our intent.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
On the generators, are there any plans since this is going to be here to convert to shore power?
Yes, we would like to do that as well. So once we hopefully receive approval from the commission and then the council, we will, we, we would like to get started on applying for that building permit with those two, the electric and the natural gas service. We're gonna start our end of the work sooner than September, hoping that we get that approval so that we're ready to submit. And that will eliminate, you know, a lot of noise, the two generators, the propane tank, and the diesel fuel cell.
Which those are the dangerous things on the site.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any, these are mobile units, so is there any way to put in a permanent, semi-permanent unit that doesn't? Larger single unit or something?
I, I honestly think that a more permanent, like skid-mounted, unit would maybe take up even more space. These are meant to operate at these smaller stations where we have limited space. I'm not sure how long we'll have two units there. Right now, I feel it's very necessary, but at some point, it won't be.
I kind of mean also that these two units are as efficient as you possibly could be as far as removing the contamination.
They are.
Do you need four units? Do you need eight? Do you need one giant one?
Yeah, that's a good question. There's only so much flow that the soil formation will give up. So sometimes a bigger unit is not more efficient or better. We may actually use more fuel and have more combustion emissions. But right now, we need the two units, and we're optimizing weekly. We're looking at them weekly to make sure that we're running them as efficiently as possible. But that's a process, and when you're in the early stages of a cleanup, it's tricky to optimize that. Once we get a little bit further down the road, then we'll have them fully optimized.
And Frank, would that, would this be covered that or would they have to come back if they wanted to increase or decrease their footprint?
So my guess is that this is the worst-case scenario, what we have in front of us, so anything less would be covered by this conditional use permit.
Unless they wanted to add.
If they wanted to add, then we would need to talk to them and see what that looked like.
Which on a conditional use permit, we can always update
Yes.
on a relatively short notice. So your company, this is what you guys do for a business. You're not, you, you're employed by Circle K, but as a specialist providing a specialized service to them. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's my firm. I've been doing this for thirty years. My team has close to that experience at varying levels, and we really have done many, many, many UST release investigations and remediation cleanups.
We may call you back up after the public.
Sure.
With that?
I could go and do it. I'd like to pick her brain, but not at the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna open the public portion of the meeting for this item only. If you choose to speak, you'll be given three minutes. When you step up to the microphone, please state your name. Be concise, be polite. I'll give everybody a chance to speak for your three minutes. Depending on what you're asking or saying, the response may happen during this meeting, or it may have to be referred to town staff. So given that, who would like to step up to the microphone and speak? All right, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. So the commission, do we have any more questions for the staff? Do we have any more questions for a regional expert? Well, it looks like we've satisfied.
I have a question about attachment A, conditions of approval on part C.
Part three?
Part three.
Okay.
Next to last sentence about live hedges being planted along all sides. With the water issue and the fact that most of the times that we've required hedges and to buffer zones and stuff, they look nice for the first year, then they die and they're ugly, and the watering systems that go to them just encourage weeds, and they don't pick the weeds down. I'd like to see the town stop requiring hedges and landscaping on every project. I mean, this is supposed to be temporary. In a couple of years, it's gonna come down, and then you're just gonna have dead tree stumps and-
Is it a block wall, Will?
Yeah, CMU.
Currently, no, but that is part of the stipulation, correct?
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't think it needs landscaping. The wall looks nice.
The wall's nice. I mean, you already got a provision if there's graffiti, you know, that has to be taken care of.
We could probably
Even paint.
Put that as a requirement for approval.
So you can either, I mean, what's great about this being a conditional use permit is they're on the hook until they're done with the cleanup. So if there's an issue with anything, we have the ability to go to them and say, you need to fix this, or you're not in compliance with your conditional use permit. That being said, if the council, if the commission just wants the block wall, and it would need to be then painted to match the building.
Painted to match Circle K building. It would look pretty nice, I think.
So and then at the end of this, they're supposed to take the block wall down?
They can if they choose, or if Circle K wishes to keep it up for dumpster enclosure or something, some other reason, they absolutely can. Nothing would preclude that, but if you want them to specifically take that down, we would want to stipulate it.
I'm just saying that once it, they move their stuff out of it, the wall's still there, the hedges will still be there, the hedges, you know, Circle K isn't the best about keeping up the little belts that they have now with plants on them. I think the bank takes care of more on that side than Circle K does. They don't even pick up the trash that blows over there, so I'd rather not see more dead trees in the future.
Well, when we make the motion, we can ask that that be removed from the requirement.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So having heard everything and asked lots of questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve conditional use permit, CUP two zero two four dash zero two, as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing, and the conditional, and the conditions of approval in Attachment A with the removal from item three of Attachment A, where live hedges shall be planted along all sides of the enclosure to soften its appearance.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
I have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes.
Commissioner Maders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schweitzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Zamudio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your information. Okay, so we're gonna go to item E, action items, which it says none. Are we still good with that? Okay, so we have item F, information items, and F one is staff to visit with us about prior cases to Town Council.
Good evening again, Planning Commission. Prior council items that we had come through P and Z back to council. First one was the zone change in CUP for CNM landscaping that did receive approval from Town Council. Secondly, is that ever giving Conex box text amendment. We did get that to study session last week with council, both in a residential and commercial session, two days last week. It is gonna be coming back to the commission in September for further refinements in a couple key areas. And then hopefully, if the commission sees fit, that'll go to council again at the end of September.
You'll have a new, you'll have a whole new staff report and packet for that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so next item is F two. Is there anybody on the commission who has anything they would like to talk about? No. Okay, so that leaves the chairman and the public. So item F three is a portion of the meeting where the chairman can talk about things a little bit, and I'm only gonna make a very brief statement. There have been some pretty interesting things that the town council has requested us to take a look at and offer some guidance, which we, I think, have done a pretty decent job. One of the things that was recently came to us was about the animal count. There was a whole bunch of people at the last study session who vociferously expressed their opinion that we should have no, zero, none regulation, which wasn't the instructions from the town council. So just wanted to say that we will visit that again. So just wanted to say that we will visit that again. The next meeting is gonna be in the near future, a couple of months down the road because of the other stuff on our schedule. And we would invite anybody and everybody who wants to attend the meeting to come. However, during this meeting, we will only entertain and hear people who came to the meeting or come to the meeting with constructive ideas on how to help the commission draft extremely minimal regulation for animal counts on property. We will not be doing what we did in the last meeting where we're asking your opinion or what you want to say or anything that comes to mind when you step up to the podium. This will be a very direct and straightforward meeting, which will only entertain ideas and, uh, thoughtful, constructive criticism so that we can get our job done to send it to the town council. And I just wanted to put that out there because in reading the minutes from the last meeting, there seemed to be a very large difficulty for people understanding what we were really there to do. And it didn't have a thing to do with FFA or Little League or whether we like children or don't like children. That's not gonna happen at the next meeting, so I'm just kind of putting that out there for all of the naysayers to stew on for the next two months. Or maybe three months. Now, having said that, the public is now given an opportunity to speak about things that are not on the agenda tonight because we've already done that. So if you have some thought or comment that you would like to make, this is your opportunity to do this in this meeting. We most times cannot directly respond at, to these things, but can direct town staff to maybe help out after the meeting is over. So would anybody like to step up to the microphone and exercise their rights as an American citizen? Okay. That portion's done, and now the favorite portion of all is a motion to adjourn. Wow, it took a long time.
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
You don't want a roll call vote?
No.
Yeah.
We gotta do that. We need to get a whole new deal. All right, look, I want to thank everybody tonight, especially staff and the lady that gave us some education here. I know some folks came here with some questions, but this is all we can tackle for tonight because that's all we're, uh, commissioned to do, so thank you.